Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Webster Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Yeah? Okay. The first order of business is the election of Board Officers. I now entertain a motion, a nomination for President of the Board of Education for the 14-15 school year. I declare them closed. Mike and Sue, will you please stand for your oath of office? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President and Vice President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations. And I now turn it over to Mike.
Wasn't that fun?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. You can, you can, uh...
And you're going to sign that one for President.
That one, okay.
And that's your...
Where is Adele's? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Tom, for use of your cheaters. I can't see anything without them. All right, now we take the oath of office for the Superintendent of Schools. Adele, if you would stand, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I now do the oath of office for our Board Clerk. I'm going to change that a little bit, so I'll get that in there. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Thank you very much. All right, we now are official, so now let's take a look at some of the district appointments. And let me steal a pencil. Thank you. Let's take a look at Roman numeral four. We'll take a look at all of them from letters A through, all the way through letters double B, going from District Treasurer all the way down to the National Medical Review Officer. Are there any questions there at all from the Board?
Mike, I just want to point out there, two that are listed as to be filling. The Deputy Treasurer, I mentioned, other, uh, that is, uh, they're quite who will be leaving the district.
And so obviously when we appoint, that'll come to us. Okay. Any questions from the Board? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the district appointments for Roman numeral four?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Cindy, you're going to take care of the District Treasurer, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do that. Okay, Board Members, if you would, please, take a look at Roman numeral five, the district designations. We're looking at the banks that will have deposits of our funds. And all the way, well, we'll just take a look at A and all one through 11. Telling you what the General Municipal Law, Section 10, the acceptable types of collateral. Any questions there? Then we have a motion, please, to accept district designation of the depository of district funds to the, do we, do you want them all named in the motion or can we just...
No. The A is going to be the motion.
Okay. A, A will be the motion. All, uh, may we have a mo, thank you. Time second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's take a look at B, the official location for the posting of Board of Education agendas, which will be on the district floor, third floor of Spry. Questions there? All right. I'm going to tell you what, why don't we take B, C, D, and E together? Uh, letter C is the official newspaper, which is the Webster Herald, and then we also have people who can administer petty cash, which is no more than $100, from all the particular high schools, junior highs, the aquatic center, building grounds, transportations, and the financial office, plus the elementary buildings. And finally, letter E is the authorized signing of the school lunch agreements. Any questions there?
No.
I'll make the motion.
All right, to accept letters B, C, D, and E. Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. All right, Board Members, take a look at Roman numeral six, which is food services. I didn't get on, sorry, girl.
You want to take that one? I'll take this one.
There it is. Sorry. The necessary resolutions, letters A through G. Any questions there? Got it, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, there's nothing that needs to be pointed out there at all that...
Um, all of these have been, are the same resolutions that we've used in the past, allowing for us to continue to operate within the guidelines of the Board's resolutions as far as hiring people, as far as making transfers, establishing the extra classroom account, signing documents that are in, that already have been approved with the budget, that, um, normal processes that happen on a, on a weekly basis.
Questions? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept?
I have a motion.
Thank you, Fritz. Second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Roman numeral seven. I'm going to do these separately because we probably want to talk about the school lunches. Uh, first one is athletic admission. We're talking about a suggested price of $2. Students will have, uh, free, there's no fee for Webster students, and there is $1 for all other students attending games. $2 fee for adults. Motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. The rental of musical instruments, suggested for the school year rental is $80 and summer rental is $20. That's a nice bargain.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sue. Question?
Yeah. That's through the school or is that through the different music places around? That's just through the school, right?
Through the school.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, these are like the, the instruments that would be very, very difficult to rent somewhere.
Yeah, if you're a tuba player.
You know, the very.
Okay.
So the school buys them and then they rent them to the students, but not, not your standard trombone or trombone.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Um, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, letter C is the school lunches. Currently, the school lunches are $2.25 for the elementary and secondary. We are suggesting that we raise the price to $2.55. It has something to do with the national food requirements. Anybody have any questions on those? Because Jim is here, he could answer it. Still, $2.55, you can't go to Burger King for that.
Yeah, but they don't eat half of it because it doesn't taste, I mean, let's be real. When was the last time you had a lunch in the...
Motion to accept the $2.55 price?
So moved.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one opposed on that. All right, the fees for the AV technician, custodian, food service, and sentries when you are using the school facilities. We are, um, the current on a evening and Saturdays, 46, and for Sundays, 47. We're raising it to 47.20 on the evenings and Saturdays and 48.40 on Sundays, and you can see the same price changes for the custodian, food service, and sentries.
Like there's, they're all up to 45 percent, which is what the contract does.
Very good. No other questions?
Does, uh, do the outside agencies have any charge for them, for any fees? Was that for outside agencies for use of facilities too? Like if a dance company came in to use the stage?
We would, if, we would normally bring a custo, custodian in during the time that they were going to be here, and they would pay for that custodian charge at these rates.
They pay for it, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what these charges, these aren't what we're paying our employees, these are what we're charging, um, users, outside users.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Talk fast.
I know. Kathy, if we go down, we'll move upstairs where there's some light, okay? Because I, this would be pretty dark in here.
We'll be all right. Storms pass.
All right, other questions on the charge for school facilities?
No.
Nope. May we have a motion, please, to accept?
So moved.
Thank you. Mike made it, Paul seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cindy? And finally, the college extension for Monroe Community College, that's per, per agreement. So a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. All right, Roman numeral eight. We're looking at substitute teacher pay and miscellaneous salary pay. It did not change. I just wanted to point that out. Any questions?
Although, there are some changes that will take place January 1 because...
Correct.
And will we be revoting on that then, or is we, because we're voting tonight, then it's okay for that to happen in January?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and truthfully, there's really no vote because it's state law.
State law, that you have to pay minimum wage.
You do it anyway.
To that minimum number. So the reason they're here is so that you see them both and you're approving them both so we don't have to come back and...
Just so we understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the first number is the number that's, that the, um, new, uh, minimum wages.
Gotcha.
Question, Mike?
Yes. How many hours a day?
How many hours a day? These positions?
Yeah.
They could range from four hours to eight hours. They're substitutes.
Okay, so it's $92 flat fee?
Okay. Going back, we were just talking about two different things.
Okay.
So for the A, it's a seven-hour day. Those would be only teachers, the $92 is a seven-hour day.
Okay.
For B, those would be support-type staff that would work when, as a substitute, and those are the minimum wages and the maximum wage we'll pay, but the minimum wages are going up to eight and 8.75.
Okay.
Those hours could be anywhere from three, four, to eight hours a day.
Okay with that, Mike?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, can we have a motion to accept A and B, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries. All right, the community programs and services, positions from lifeguard all the way to, uh, what do we got? Instructor of minimum of three years' experience. Questions there?
I just want to have more comment. I had asked for some information because I have been asked in the community how we review and price our swimming lessons and things of that nature, and the infer, and Sue Hemingway provided that information for me, and I just want to publicly recognize that Webster's swim lessons fees are, are neither at the top nor the bottom of the range of lessons, which are students, our residents, less than out-of-community participants. So I just want to have that acknowledged and thank her for that information.
So noted. May we have a motion, please, to accept the community programs and services?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And let's take a look at letter D, which is the substitute personnel for not only clerical, school nurse, teacher aides, et cetera, et cetera. There are the suggested prices. Again, that changes in January, if you notice, for the hourly wages because of the minimum wage law. Questions there? May we have a motion to accept, please? Thank you, Mike and Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, our annual election and vote will be held Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, from 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night at the Webster Schrader High School Gymnasium. Motion there?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, oh, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move into our regular business meeting. Board Members, you've had a chance to take a look at the agenda. I am aware of one new item, which would be Board Business A6. We'll be adding personnel action there. Are there any other changes to the agenda? May I have a motion, please, to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Ann, seconded. All in favor? Okay, motion is approved. We offer the opportunity for visitors to address the Board. We don't have very many visitors today, but we'll give that opportunity out there. Would anyone like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will move on. Adele, your report, please.
Okay. I want to begin by just highlighting what a joy and pleasure it was for me to share in commencement ceremonies with many of you on the Board and many people in our community for Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas Class of 2014 on June 29th. So we have some pictures that we're going to show you of these classes. Now, we have one Board member that was a parent. Paul, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, being a parent, we actually didn't even see you that day. There's so many people there. Uh, the, the atmosphere was electric, it was emotional, and most of all celebratory as our seniors entered the RIT auditorium as seniors and left as high school graduates. I was honored to share some of their accomplishments and wish them all well as they began the next chapter in their life. So you really can see the absolute joy on their faces as you look at these photos, and I was also watching the parents and grandparents and at one time had the grandparents stand up to be acknowledged and just so overwhelmed by the intergenerational support of our high school graduates. So it was an awesome day, um, and it was incredibly moving day for the graduates, for the families, for the community, so heartfelt congratulations to the class of 2014. Now, parents of our district's fifth, first through fifth graders will experience a new way of sharing information on their students' progress for the upcoming school year. In the fall, there will be a new report card format that mirrors the new full-day kindergarten report card that the district stated, started using this past year. There will also be a biannual parent-teacher conference starting in the fall. The new report card features "I can" statements that align with new learning standards and better communicate to parents how their students are progressing. Report cards will come out in January and June and will be preceded by parent-teacher conferences in October and again in March. The October conference will focus on goal-setting for students, and in March, parents will get an opportunity to see how students are progressing towards the goals they set in October and make any adjustments to ensure students attain these goals by the end of the year. So we are preparing some video information and some information that will be going home, so watch for information, parents, on this new reporting season before the start of the school year in September. Now I'd like to share an exciting story of one of our alumni who is receiving national attention. If you had the chance to see Webster Schrader's 2013 alumni Teddy Coffey perform in Schrader's production of Footloose, then you know how talented he is. I remember watching him and just being, it was so, I was so struck by his talent and the natural way that he just enjoyed the dance. So Teddy is now showing the entire country his dance skills as one of the top 20 performers on Fox's So You Think You Can Dance show. The show aired live last week and Teddy performed brilliantly, so be sure to watch again tomorrow at 8:00 PM to see if our votes helped advance Teddy to the next round of competition. Congratulations to Teddy and his family, we are so very proud of you. And finally, I'm proud to report that our district was recently profiled in two national publications. The first we're putting up on the screen, Becoming a Learning System. Webster's Transformative Teacher Leadership Structure for K-12 was profiled in this publication, and these both came out in the last two weeks. And we are also included in Orchestrating School Change: Transforming Your Leadership, and in this publication is an example of the district's exemplary literacy vision statement for our elementary. So it is gratifying to see our team's work featured and to see Webster's footprint in this national stage, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Adele. It was fun going to graduation. The kids did a nice job. All right, moving to Board Business now, and we are looking at a contract ratification for Wila, which is our administrative group. Adele, do you want to highlight any particular points of it?
Yeah, so we have reached an agreement, it's a three-year collective bargaining agreement with Wila, our administrative union. The agreement includes a 2.35% salary raise each year as well as new pay-for-performance system. The district's contribution to the healthcare premiums of new hires will decrease to 75% and the vesting time that a new hire has to reach before retiring from the district with a health benefit increases from 10 years to 13 years. And then lastly, the district's contribution to 105 accounts will increase over the term of the contract while the dollar figure for medical buyout option will decrease. So those are pretty much the highlights of the agreement.
Any questions from the Board?
Just thank you for the efforts negotiating that.
Appreciate that.
All right, seeing no questions, may we have a motion, please, to ratify the Wila contract? Mike, thank you. Second?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jim, Treasurers' Report for May?
This is your May Treasurers' Report, and during the month of May, receipts to the general funds amounted to just about $3.2 million. One point, almost 1.8 million came from sales tax. About 1.4 million came from other funds. We received our federal funds and we repaid the general funds when those dollars came in. So in our bank accounts for May, we had just over 56 million. On page two are the balances for school lunch, federal, capital, and trust and agency. And on page three are our investments, and, um, right now, we're currently receiving about 0.2%, well, for the month of May. It did go down for the month of June, but, um, as we've been in that 0.1 to 0.2% throughout the year, we've invested our funds, but not at a very high rate. So in investments, we have just over $59 million.
Questions from the Board? May we have a motion, please, to accept the Treasurers' Report for May?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we heard about the bus lifts, so Jim, you want to fill us in on this resolution?
Um, we've finalized the, the bus lifts. The Board did approve, um, at the last meeting, the bid for the bus lifts. Um, this document and resolution was prepared by our attorney, and the resolution allows the Board to approve the necessary maintenance and repair of the three bus lifts. It declares the project as an emergency contingent expense to be funded from the district's unappropriated fund balance. That'll allow us to run it through as a capital project and receive aid on the work that we do. The entire resolution is on the back page and, and there are three where "as" is and a "now" there for that should be approved by the Board.
Questions there at all? All right, may we have a motion, please, to accept the entire resolution? Thank you, Ann. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Board Members, I'd ask that you take a look at the Board Liaison Assignment. We'll take a look at Monroe County School Board Committees first. Ann and Tom, you still, Tom, you still want to do Legislative?
I'd like to, but if someone wants to join, um, I'd be glad to step off.
So Ann, would you like to join Tom on that?
So, can there only be two?
No, you can have two voting members.
But anybody can go.
And you're there as an officer anyway.
Right.
Fritz, can you still do Labor?
I can still do it.
But you'd like a sub?
Well, Ann, Ann has filled in for me in the past, and it probably wouldn't be a bad idea just to have a substitute on the books, so if, if Ann would be so kind or if we'd need to...
Okay, you got that?
Thank you.
Okay, information exchange. I will be chairing that, so we could probably have another person.
Definitely.
Well, she has Ann on there.
Oh, yes, Ann. You're on there? Okay, anyone else? Nope? Okay, we'll stay with that. Executive Committee will still be the same, Sue, Mike, and Adele.
Right.
Uh, Steering Committee becomes Sue and... Do I, am I part of that now? No? Okay. The audit?
Unless you want to be.
Oh. Another...
Because they're appointed.
No. Oh, okay. Well, actually, you are. Because you're committee chair. Because you're committee chair. That's what I thought.
Okay.
That's right. There you go, Mike.
Another meeting.
It's like four times a year. It's not so bad.
All right. Myself and Mike have agreed to do audit. Mike, can we talk you into being the Chair?
Talk to me? I think you do a great job, Mike. I'll follow you up and maybe next year.
It doesn't mean I'm the Chair. All right, we'll still leave that Chair to be determined because we do have four other individuals on that.
They could chair it, right?
They could chair it. They're all rookies.
Who's that?
The Budget Advisory Committee.
I think...
It's smarter to have a Board Member.
I, only because it's, who's calling the meetings?
Yeah.
Who's doing the minutes? I did the minutes the last time.
Well, I, I think I can turn somebody's arm here in a couple of days and...
Who's most likely to be there? Can you be Chair?
I don't think, I don't know that you have to even nominate a Chair right now. Why don't we just say we have a committee and...
Yeah, and we'll work from there.
We'll work from there.
Excuse me. Okay, we do Budget Advisory. Uh, in the past, it's been Mike, Fritz, and Tom. Do you still wish to do that? Or Paul, were you on, were you on Budget?
I was not on Budget Advisory. I'll take somebody's spot if they want, or I've done it before, or Policy Committee.
You can be Policy.
I can do Policy Committee with that one.
Well, we're on Budget, so...
I am.
Let's do it this way. Mike, do you still want to be on Budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Fritz, do you still want to be on Budget? Tom?
I'll step down, so Paul can be on budget.
Okay, Paul, you want to be on budget now?
Sure, yes.
Okay, got the change, Cindy? Great. Alright, now we'll move to Policy.
I forgot to tell you.
Well, Sue will be the chair, I know Anne wanted to do Policy, so I'll step down from Policy and let Anne do Policy. And Tom, you still want Policy?
Yes, I'd like to be on Policy.
Okay. We never got called for one last year, did we, Sue?
No, we did not, but we did just get an email recently which told us the dates for next year. I brought it to their attention. The first one's on September something.
I better check my email.
Yeah, it was from Janine Sanger? I believe so. Alright, or I forwarded it to you or something?
I'll check, I may...
I have the first date here, I just wrote up this one down. When at, the when committee? They had not been inviting us.
Strategic planning, still Sue, Anne, and Mike, strategic plan?
It's Paul.
Or Paul?
It's Paul.
Strategic plan?
I'd like to be on about two stuff.
Oh, where?
Yeah, you need to chair it, Paul. It was Paul.
Oh, but I was looking, yeah, I was looking at the new, it was Sue, Anne, and Mike.
Paul, Ben, and Mike. Are you going to do strategic planning, Mike?
I was.
You want to do four? So, what is the status of the summer committees? They're supposed to be responding on the Google Doc? Yeah, when's the deadline? Do you know when the deadline for that is? No, but we can check. Okay. Yeah, we'll check. Because we need to get that work started. Yeah. If we're doing it this summer. Yeah.
Alright, so we're adding Anne and Paul.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure.
Isn't that a...
You've got to be careful here.
Right, and it's a meeting, that's correct. Yeah, we need three. What, you, maybe you could alternate if I'm unavailable.
You could be the alternate.
I'll be the clerk if you need later.
Did you catch that, Cindy?
That's good.
Alright. Now, our, in the past, we've always had a particular board member assigned to a particular building, and the thought process going around the table right now is that maybe we'd develop a calendar, and board members then can look at their calendar and see which events they can make, which would assure that each of the buildings would then have board presence. As it stands now, if a board member doesn't make it, there's no board presence at a particular elementary activity. So, we need to decide if that's the way we want to go, and if it is, we're all set, and if not, we have to go back to assigning people to individual buildings.
My concern with that system is then no one's taking responsibility for actually attending, or would it be...
You know how Sue does her Sunday calendar and it says, these are the events?
So that's how it would be assigned, I see.
We could probably ask Sue very nicely if she would do a calendar, and then we'd say, alright, we'll fill in who can go to what event. I mean...
That would mean we don't have to read our emails.
Yeah, that would mean something, so the people that don't read their emails would have to read their emails.
They just don't respond.
Oh, you read them, but you don't...
I read them, I don't respond.
Okay.
Does that overcome your worry?
No, that's fine.
I mean, we can try it this way, if it doesn't work, halfway through, we can say, you know, we'll go back. You know, I just don't want buildings not...
Right, right.
Being, you know, represented.
Understood.
We okay with that? Alright, now, that understood, we probably should do action to make this official, so Board Liaisons, can we have a motion to...
I'm sorry. I just have a question, how do you think that would impact, does that impact the relationship between the principal and the board member then, or PTSA and a board member, just because they don't know who's coming, is that going to impact their...
Well, they would know who's coming because we tell them ahead of time, because we have our, hopefully, our calendar's two weeks ahead, schedule.
And if you want to go to one building, you just sign up for that, right?
Right, okay, as long as they're fine with that, I'm good.
The probability is that this is not going to change much from what was in the past, because the same people will probably be available to that.
A little more flexibility.
But it offers flexibility if someone, if someone pops up and work can't make it, something comes up.
And there's nothing to prevent us from communicating with the school that we liaison to and saying, it is my anticipation to continue, right?
Right, it's just that now, hopefully, there will always be somebody there. Alright, can we have a motion there then, to accept this, as, this will be our liaison reading?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
So, we're still, I'm sorry, we're still designated as that's, so there's no designations?
Correct. But we're going to talk you into Sue to developing a calendar for the rest of the board, so that...
I heard that.
Thanks, Sue.
I heard that. It's hard to be good at what you do, isn't it?
Alright, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, just Sue. Sorry, Sue. Okay, we are looking at a textbook purchase for AP US History. Tell us all about it, but you're not...
I'm not Terry. I'm here for Terry, and I will, I will do my best to be brief. So, he's got some talking points that he just wanted me to share with you, so I'll just go through those talking points and answer any questions that you might have. You should have an executive summary that, that we put together for you as well. The new resources needed to reflect, the new resource is needed to reflect the changes in AP US curriculum and assessments. Heavier emphasis is being placed on building historical thinking skills, analysis, contextualization, and synthesis, and less emphasis on memorization of facts, which is something that we have been talking about in this past year, and certainly when the social studies standards came out. Number two, this process was teacher-driven, and number three, again, like we reported last time on the physics AP textbook, it was definitely, had students involved, to the point, this time, actually, they piloted several of the chapters with the kids so that they could truly get authentic voice back from the kids to make that decision, and unanimously, teachers and students both chose the same, you know, landed on the same textbook, which is the one that we have in front of you today, the textbook by Henrietta, you've got to remember the names, Henrietta Hindrecker and Edwards. So, those are the main pieces that he wanted to, and I know one question last time was about the online resources, and again, just like the last one, there is a plethora of online resources for kids, and you can see there that Terry has given a, given some of those pieces.
Including the actual text online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and my understanding and Terry's understanding was that if you have an iPad or a Nook, you definitely could do it on iPad, and we believe that it can be done on Nooks and other tablets as well.
Good.
Which is where textbook companies are going.
Questions from the board?
An app? I don't know if there's an app for that, but I, I can certainly get back to you on that, but that'd be a smart thing for them to do, it certainly would, absolutely.
Is there a cycle in general, is there a cycle for determining which department or subject may get a textbook, how does that work?
The directors have worked together to do that in their own departments because it's important, but then we all come together as a group to say, this is where, and like this year, we had, there was a couple of requests that we had to say, not this year, we don't have the funds for that for this year, but we'll be on a cycle for next year or the, the two years from now.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, there is.
Is there any point of this, part of this which is reimbursable next year, or certain percentage?
Yeah, in the textbook aid?
Should textbook aid, what percentage do we get back traditionally?
It's a dollar amount per student, it's like fifty-eight dollars per student.
Some, almost, almost half.
We generate about five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in textbook aid, so we have to spend five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to recoup that.
Okay, thank you.
It's part of that, it is part of that.
And we always try to maximize that, right?
We always do that.
We always, yeah, exactly.
We have spent a little bit more than what we maximize because of what's in the budget.
Well, yeah, it doesn't always come out to be exactly that much.
Exactly.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Well, we haven't...
Wait.
Wait, because...
Terry's quick, but not that quick. He told me after the last one, I had to be brief, so I was trying to be...
May we have a motion, please, to accept the purchase of AP United States History textbooks? Thank you, Mike, second? Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now you may leave. Nice job, Terry-ish, whatever. Do we have a, I don't have a resolution, I'll just...
Does Eric have a resolution?
Is Eric still in?
Yeah.
Do we have wording resolution, or can I just...
I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Joe Bastofen, a great job he did at graduation, nice job, Joe, it was flawless, and I really appreciated it over RIT, I really liked the venue there, too, it was a nice venue and it's comfortable, that's why I didn't see me, because I was...
Where were you?
I was in the upper deck, no, I was in the stand, we were in the stands, but it was very nice, and very easy parking, and the weather was great, that helped out, too. And everybody did a great job all the way through, and Joe, I'm sure your hand was a little sore and tired, and the pose, you had a great pose there every time, three-hundred and some poses every time, every minute, nice job. And thank you to all the K-12 teachers throughout the years for my daughter. Yeah, it was good.
You watching it on Channel fifteen?
You're watching The Graduation, yeah.
I have not seen it yet.
Yeah, it is playing.
It's playing.
Thank you, okay. Alright, board, we have a motion to accept the resignation of Adele Bovard and authorize the board president to execute the separation agreement. Any comments or questions? May I have a second to that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Okay, alright, you make the motion, technically, Tom makes the motion, you second it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Do you need the wording on that? You got it all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And with that, the Webster School District Board of Education and Adele, we have reached a mutual agreement, providing for Mrs. Bovard's voluntary separation from her position effective July thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. And on behalf of the board, we would like to thank Adele for her years of service, and we appreciate her many efforts to improve student achievement in Webster, and we wish her the best in whatever her future endeavors may be. And for those that would like to know what the next steps are, the Board of Education will be meeting in the very, very near future to decide on a person, a qualified person to serve as the district's acting superintendent during this interim period, while we plan out a process to identify and select a new leader to succeed Superintendent Bovard. So, thank you very much, Adele, for your service.
Thank you.